It's our community development meeting and it's August 10th, 2023. The time is 10:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting to order. In attendance are Commissioners Mattari Brooks and Duncan. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Opening remarks. This is deliberations for items one and two. Item three, we will be ending public testimony and entering into deliberations. I understand that there's one person who would like to speak that's really out of the ordinary. However, I do understand that I don't think I was had access to the written comments that might have been submitted, so we're going to deal with that when we get to item three. And then we do have a business meeting item, and I would ask that, since we have an 11:45 meeting, is can we put that off? Okay. Okay, so we'll see when we get there. And that's my opening remarks, so conflicts of interest? Nope? None? All right, we'll go ahead and start with item one, MSF 22-0005, the Club at Rock Creek Townhomes Flat. Are you leading us?
Yes, correct. Good morning, everyone. For the record, the application is being developed. I will be very brief. This morning's presentation is for a major final plat application request by the Club at Rock Creek.
Flat is your microphone.
Association.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
This is a request by Nail Idaho Real Estate LLC. The subject property is located within the PUD boundaries of the Club at Rock Creek, formerly known as Black Rock North. The applicants in this request are would like to final plat a 12-lot major subdivision. The subject property currently consists of six residential lots. Each lot is approximately a quarter acre in size, and it has duplex on each lot. As I stated, the property is located within the boundaries of the existing PUD. Access is via existing private roads. Everything is built out. All the infrastructure is in place. BRU, Black Rock Utilities, is providing water and sewer service. The roads are maintained by the PUD HOA. The zoning is rural, however, under the master plan, the PUD master plan, lots were contemplated to be less than five acres in size, as long as the overall density met what was originally approved. The PUD does contemplate zero lot line townhomes, which in this case, the applicants are creating 12 townhomes with zero lot lines. The lot lines will run, they will basically bisect in the middle of the existing structures, and each unit could then be sold with its own underlying land to individual property owners. The applicant has made this request a little while ago. They have been directed by our building division to make the necessary renovations to meet the fire wall protection requirements on all the common walls within each of the six duplexes. They did have to make all the alterations in compliance with the building code, and we have since received a go-ahead from our building division with final inspections that met all the code requirements. Each new lot will be approximately eighth of an acre in size. There were a number of conditions in the preliminary approval in 2017 that requested clarification in the face of plat that these were going to be individual lots, which it is clearly marked as being individual lots with a lot line running through the each building. There were some requirements with regard to future landscaping for zero lot line homes. Currently, there are no regulations in our zoning ordinance that would stipulate additional landscaping, nor did we find anything in the PUD plan that requested additional landscaping other than what's already there. I do have photos here that there is existing vegetation on the property. We don't feel there's any need to require any additional landscaping, just because these duplexes are now being turned into townhomes. We feel that the applicant has complied with all the preliminary requirements and conditions in preliminary approval, MSP 17-0004, and we request that you approve this this final plat application.
Questions for Vlad?
Yeah, I do. Those trees, is there any assurance those trees will remain?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is there any assurance that those trees we see will remain?
I don't believe there's any intent, Commissioner Brooks, to have them be removed. I, I, the only reason I do bring up the landscaping topic is because there's a condition of approval that stated the need for landscaping to meet the requirements of zero lot line structures or zero lot line setback structures on these lots, and there's nothing in our code that would require additional landscaping than what's already out there. Nothing is being removed. Everything is staying as is.
Okay.
They're merely allowing each unit to be sold separately rather than being held as a duplex.
Understand. Thank you.
Okay.
No questions.
All right. We are in deliberations, so thoughts?
I don't have a problem with it. It looks well planned, and, you know, I don't like quarter acre all over the county, but I think in this particular area, that's appropriate.
Okay.
It's a PUD. The overall density remains the same, and this was approved years and years and years ago, so this is part of that process.
All right, I agree. Motion?
I move that we approve MSF 22-0005, the Club at Rock Creek Townhouse.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. All right. MSF 22-0005 has been approved. Item two, MSF 23-0003, and this is Diagonal Estates. Vlad, is this you again?
Correct.
Commissioners, this is another request for our final plat application of a preliminarily approved five-lot major subdivision by Willamette Valley Real Properties LLC. The subject property is located off of Diagonal Road. It comprises of 25 acres, and the subject property is fairly level. There's very little, if any, vegetation on site. The zoning is rural, as you know, with a minimum lot size of five acres. The applicants have recently constructed the road, as you can see, that is that intersects with Diagonal Road heading north, and it culminates within the subdivision, and then there is an easement for future connection with parcels to the north as required per the Cooten County Land Use and Development Code. This is pretty straightforward. Each lot will have individual wells and septic systems. The newly constructed road will be privately maintained. It has been constructed to the associate highway district standards. The applicant has entered into a road development agreement with Lakes Highway District. They're currently finalizing the CCNRs and road development agreement with their attorney. They were, I believe they just received a new name for, or they just, they were just approved for a new name on this road, and we believe that there's no outstanding issues that would prevent this moving forward with an approval. We stand by for any questions.
Questions?
No questions.
We're sure that the CCNRs are properly being applied to the individual lots?
That is correct. They are required to reference each lot within the plat to be part of the road maintenance agreement for this interior road, and that is currently being finalized by their attorney.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay. Thoughts?
Fits within our current comprehensive plan, so it's over the prairie.
I agree.
All right. Motion?
I move that we approve MSF 23-0003, Diagonal Estates.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. All right. MSF 23-0003 has been approved. Now we'll move on to item three, ORA, which is an ordinance 22-0001. This is the Coeur d'Alene Reservation Rezone, and it's a continuation from our July 13th public hearing. And are you all right from hearing from the one gentleman?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So, so you've got three minutes, and I'm, oh, that is fine. And you submitted written comments as well?
I sent a letter to you, and I, they said that they got it to you, but it sounds like you didn't.
Sounds like I might not have seen it, but then here's my stack of letters. So, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, and thank you, Cooten County Commissioners, for hearing our concerns. We would like to voice our opposition to the proposed rezoning idea by the Coeur d'Alene Tribes to rezone the 25 acres of reservation in Cooten County from rural to agriculture. This proposed legislation is paramount for my husband Damon and I, because we bought 34 acres of property last year in this area in Rockford Bay. A little bit about us, my husband and I married in 1993 St. Thomas Church here in Coeur d'Alene. I'm a native of Coeur d'Alene, born in 1967 at Cooten Memorial Hospital, graduated valedictorian of Coeur d'Alene High School in 1985. I was junior miss of Cooten County. Damon and I both attended U of I. Damon served as student body vice president of U of I. After college, we moved to Boise where Damon worked as a legislative assistant to Governor Batt and Governor Kempthorn. I completed my doctoral internship in Boise, and our first two children were born in Boise in 1996 and 98. 1999, Damon pulled a fast one and signed on to active-duty Army. I was eight months pregnant with our third child when the Army moved us across the country from here in Idaho to our home state to Fort Bragg, North Carolina. Soon after, he was sent on his first deployment in the air when 9/11 happened. He was deployed an additional five times, three times to Afghanistan, once to Iraq, and once to Jordan. We moved here where the Army sent us. I put my career on hold to move away from our state and do this. Our kids grew up away from their grandparents and family. We bought this property. It's our right to do what we want. We don't plan to subdivide it, but we feel our rights are being taken away. We heard about this in the paper, and it's just not right to tell us more, we can do more on our property. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Do you want to add anything?
It's just not right to tell us what we can do and rezone. We're not planning to subdivide.
We can't hear you because of the...
The microphone's right there.
You have to...
We're not planning to subdivide, but we're being told that we now, our rights are being taken away should we later decide to do that. We wouldn't be able to. We've been fighting for our country for 30 years. I'm from Coeur d'Alene, and it feels like a violation, and I wanted to be heard, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, then I would ask for a motion to end public testimony and enter into deliberations.
I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations for ORA 22-0001, Coeur d'Alene Reservation Rezone, public hearing.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. All right, so this is just between the three of us now. We may have questions for staff, but I'm not sure. Who would like to go first?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
I have a statement. I apologize in advance for those of you who have to listen through it. It's a little bit longer than I prefer, but there is some context. Do no harm. We often associate that creed with the medical profession. I believe that it should also apply to the BOCC, especially when it comes to the issue of water. A while back, a farmer in Bennoah County was irrigating a hayfield. It affected surrounding residents' wells. He stopped irrigating out of concern for his neighbors. Those people were fortunate to have a considerate farmer stop watering his field so his neighbor's wells would not be affected. That's not the norm. We know that new wells can affect existing wells. We know that water is less available in the southern part of the county than compared to the prairie. We know that the financial burden for a new well can cost upwards of $50,000 to $100,000 and even more, depending on how many drilling attempts need to be made. For most people, this can be a devastating expense. By allowing unrestricted and irresponsible growth to occur in this community, this is how the BOCC can allow longtime citizens to be harmed, and we can affect this outcome. The Board of County Commissioners, in my opinion, has a duty to prioritize the welfare of the current county citizens over those who want to move here, and that means limiting the ability of one to subdivide on occasion their properties if it affects existing residents' ability to have water. Water is a real issue in this county, like it is in most of the West, and we, as a board, increase the likelihood of harm to existing citizens if we allow for more density without considering its effects on existing citizens' wells. The Board has received information that there are plenty of recent wells that produce significant volumes of water, but that information is merely a snapshot at the time the wells were found and tested. It does not take into account, excuse me, all the drilling attempts to find water that failed, which could significantly affect how the data is viewed. Further, there is no data to show how existing wells are being affected by new wells over time. Waiting to hear from longtime citizens that their wells are running dry due to new growth is, I believe, a grossly negligent policy and should never be contemplated by this board or any other. I believe this board should be looking at ways to ensure that developers prove that new wells will not affect existing wells. Conversely, I do not believe that we should ram our policies onto homeowners unwillingly. It breeds contempt and an adversarial stance between government and citizens. Instead, I prefer government to provide good information to citizens, and in this case, hope that with that information, they can come together and decide as a group what is best for their community and seek the BOCC to memorialize that desire into a new code or zoning change. At this point, it is my understanding that the tribe is somewhere within 12 to 18 months away from having real data on water in that area. I believe that is a prudent, that it is prudent that the community have access to that data so that everyone can have an opportunity to evaluate it and even have it reviewed by third parties if they so choose. Until we can look at a more comprehensive water reports, I'm concerned about those property owners who have no ties to the community and are wanting to subdivide their land into major subdivisions purely for profit motives. This is where we can put a temporary pause on such development until we can know for sure, as much as we can, that these new homes and their accompanying wells will not affect those people who currently live there. I recommend that this board consider allowing for a voluntary rezoning for those property owners on the reservation who wish to opt into it, and instruct community development to develop a new code amendment to restrict subdivisions on the reservation to no less than 10-acre lot sizes temporarily, for a minimum of two, preferably three years, so that water studies can be completed in the area, and the community and board have a chance to review and establish a way to ensure that any new development will not, and I repeat, will not, affect existing homeowners' wells. I ask that the board consider this recommendation as a viable option for this community today.
Okay. Bill?
Boy, you're smart.
I just got dropped when I was younger. That's all.
I, because he's, he's, he's written out in some detail what I'm, what I'm thinking, and I've discussed it around a little bit. I believe that, I was a tribal administrator at a federally recognized tribe in Alaska, and I know how important the rights are to Indians. I said Native Americans one time at a meeting, and I got laughed out of the room, so I hope you, I hope you're not offended. I would like to see this thing so that the people who bought property there, how long ago did you all buy your...
That's the year we bought the 34 acres.
Okay. Okay. But, but the thing is, I'm, I was a real estate broker for years, and people don't understand fully the tribal rights on that land, and that's a problem, because they go down there thinking, oh, it's just a piece of land, and it's not. There are, there are certain tribal rights. A few years ago, it was hunting. People would find somebody zooming across their land chasing an elk or killing an elk in their, quote, backyard, and it was completely legal. It was their property, but it was not, it was subject to the Indian rights, the tribal rights. I would like to, the pause, I think, is a good idea, but I would like to see people who own property now be able to say, I don't want to be rezoned, my property, and anybody who's down there owning property, give them three to six months to file and say the same thing, and then after that, take up the rezoning again. And I think it's a good thing to do, subject to the water availability. But that's, water availability is one of those things that, you're not, you can, your neighbor can, can lose it at 1,800 feet, and you, you might go down six feet and hit it, and that's, that's an exaggeration, but I've seen it in Alaska. So, I, I, I wouldn't vote for the rezon, just blanket, but, but I won't vote against it. I think it's something necessary and reasonable for the tribe to request, as long as there's an opt-out.
Could I add something? Would that be okay? You know, one of the things about this particular area that a lot of homeowners don't realize is that the disclosure requirements by sellers are not the same as other parts of the country. And water has been adjudicated for years and years and years on reservation land, and there's no requirement for sellers to necessarily disclose that. And so a lot of folks, when they buy land, they have no idea that, that this has been in court for years beforehand, that there are issues that they're just not aware of. And I think it would only be prudent that we, we try to get as much information to make a good decision and, and make sure that the community is a part of that decision, so...
And the oversight there is often due to brokers or agents not wanting to get into that with a buyer, because they're, they're, they're going for the sale, and if they sit there and say, oh, and by the way, the property is subject to some special conditions, same with the Silver Valley. You get out there, and paperwork is about this thick of disclosures. So, it's a special, it's a special area.
Okay.
Done?
All right. I'm going to spare my 1,244 words. So, what it sounds like, though, is that the board is not going to approve it the way the Planning and Zoning Commission has given it to us. So, with that, Pat, this is going to trigger another public hearing.
Yes.
Do we go ahead and make a motion today for what we would like to see, and then that comes forward, or?
Well, I think the, the motion would be to have another public hearing.
Okay.
And take additional public comment, obviously, and, you know, with the issues that, at least the other, you know, at least the other two commissioners have stated in deliberations in the front of the mind, and, and any that Commissioner Duncan may wish to opine on as well. You know, opt-in, opt-out could be one thing. You know, with the, you know, code amendment restricting subdivisions to 1 to 10 acres be a viable alternative, that could be something that we could take public testimony on. Of course, you know, further testimony and evidence regarding the water issues within the reservation would be fair game. You know, fleshing out tribal rights that Commissioner Brooks spoke to could be another topic, or anything, you know, that is relevant to this proposal. So, that, I think that would be, you know, the motion is just to have another public hearing, including a focus on the items discussed during deliberations this morning.
Okay. So, I too was leaning on approving it for the tribe and then allowing all the other property owners to opt in. We had testimony from many, many property owners who did not want to subdivide their land, but they were against the rezoning. So, I would also like to encourage the tribe to continue to work with those property owners to find out how we can, you know, come together on that issue. Yes, there's been a lot of water information provided here, and so I'd look forward to delving into that a little bit more in the next public hearing. So, I mean, really, I have 30 points. I don't know how much I need to, to go into it right now, so are you, want to try this?
I can take a stab at it. I would like to just have three items in there that Pat talked about. One is opt-in for the rezon. The second is to evaluate a temporary code amendment up to three years, and the third would be additional testimony of water issues and perhaps what the county can do to protect existing wells as testimony.
Sure. And then as far as the code amendment goes, Pat, though, I think that's a bigger issue. I don't think we're just going to be able, I, we can take testimony on it, but without it going through planning and zoning and...
Yeah, it would, it would still have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We, you know, if that were part of the outcome, then it would be just direction to staff to prepare such an amendment, and then it would go through the planning, the regular planning commission process, and then come back to the board.
Okay. So, that, that sounds great.
Okay. Staff to prepare a code amendment.
Well, we'll take testimony on it, and then if we agree, then we can, we will task staff to prepare.
Okay, so we'll just say testimony.
Yeah.
All right, I'll take a stab here.
I think that's backwards.
Okay.
I think you have to have something to talk about. Instead of the discreet parts of it, you have planning and zoning say, okay, here's, here's a, an outline of what you've, what you've talked about, and it may not be something that we, we vote up or down that night, but it's something that can be refined based on the testimony, talking about specific, because if you do this, or unless you, when a speaker speaks, you say, you, we need to hear from you on these four items or these five items. I don't know.
Well, I do like that idea, because it's easier to amend something that people are looking at than to try to figure out where we want to start at.
Yeah.
Then this would take two months, at least.
For the staff to... Probably take longer than that to get through Planning and Zoning Commission. Hey, we, we could have a, you know, at least a conceptual amendment to you by the next hearing, but I don't think it would get, you know, it would take much longer to get through planning and zoning. Wouldn't we send that amendment to Planning and Zoning after the public testimony? Well, I was just, I was responding to Commissioner Brooks's suggestion. I mean, that, that would, I would presume that that would be what would actually happen, because if we did the planning and zoning commission process beforehand, you, I can tell you, it would take several months for it to...
I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can come up, we can come up with a draft and put it in the record of this proceeding, and then that can be, you know, that, that would give people something tangible to consider. Okay.
I agree.
And then should that be the direction of the board, it, when all said and done, then we would take it through the planning commission process.
Right.
Okay, so staff to prepare a draft. All right.
We're, we're looking at September 14th or October 12th. I'm available both those days, so does that give us enough time?
September 14th would be, we'd be up against it in terms of publishing notice.
Okay. So, October 12th, then, would be...
So, public hearing on October 12th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so would this be a continuation or a... No. So would this be a continuation or a brand new? It'd be a separate hearing. Okay. I move that we have another public hearing on October 12th regarding the opt-in zoning on the tribal reservation land, as well as staff to prepare a draft of a code amendment limiting lot sizes to no less than 10 acres for a temporary period of three years and that we accept additional testimony on water issues and what the county could possibly do to protect existing citizens' wells.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Chair Duncan? Aye. Okay. That's it for that and I guess we have time for a business meeting item. So David, are you going to lead us in the comprehensive plan discussion?
Commissioners, the Planning Commission was clear when we discussed the comp plan update with them, that they would like to get funding to do update of the data, which is all the, currently the appendix of the current comp plan. I don't have an absolute number for you, but I'm guessing that's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, only because when I consult with consultants that do this on a regular basis, their starting point, which at least one group I know of that's sitting to my right, was a quarter of a million dollars for that kind of thing. If I talk to another group I've done business with in Denver and they suggested for a full-blown, completely new comp plan, it'd be a half million dollars. So sort of set that on the back burner for a moment. I do think the comp plan, I'd like to take the data I sent you yesterday back to the Plan Commission, have another dialogue with them because I didn't get a straight answer from them, frankly, as to what they want to do, whether it be a complete new one or a rewrite. We just couldn't get there. So that's where I'm at at the moment. I'd like to come back to you, but one part's clear. We need to update the data. We need to find a way to do it efficiently and economically.
Okay. Any thoughts, questions?
Well, the way I understand it is that the data goes back to '08 or '09. The community has changed dramatically. There's two issues. One is the fact that we don't even know how many of those original people are even still here and two, we know a lot of new people have moved here. And so it only seems appropriate to get a snapshot of what people are, would like to see from their local government today, given the rapid change that this community has experienced the last few years. So I would be in favor of looking at that, at least trying to evaluate the expense of it.
So I want to be clear, we're not looking at updating the comp plan per se. We're looking at updating the data that supports the comp plan and we have to have that by, is it constitution, state statute, or just our own information?
Last thing you said.
Okay.
There's no requirement to do any of that.
Okay.
On any given...
I'm just going to amend that slightly. I think, you know, I think having, having the data to support whatever your, whatever comprehensive plan or plan update comes out is, you know, makes it, you know, both legally stronger and stronger in the court of public opinion as well.
Right. So then the way...
My only point was it's not required to be done on any timeframe.
Right. Yes.
Right. Yes, but I know we do need to update it. So, so the numbers would come, then we would look at, does the comp plan, is the comp plan supported by the numbers, the new numbers? And then if it isn't, then we would look at amending the comp plan.
I'm taking that in. In my view, we know, for the reasons Commissioner Matarri just said, that the overall comp plan needs some revision.
Okay.
That much is unambiguous. The real unknown is how much and to what degree and extent because our data is so old.
Gotcha.
So I think it makes sense to start with the data and then work through how much public comment we want to have as part of that and then also how far you want to go with a policy redo.
Okay. All right. It sounds like you have direction to try to get it done, maybe free or cheap, so bring it back when you find that out.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order because our agenda is done? Okay. 10:36, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.